Okay, I have no gavel, I don't see. So I'm gonna say hello, everybody. Welcome. Looks like we're taking pictures. Good evening, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and start the meeting. Tonight's Tuesday, October 15th. Thank you. I don't have a thing. We're gonna go ahead and start our meeting, everybody. So please take your seats. Thank you all for being here tonight. Our Tuesday, October 15th meeting. First, we're gonna start our meeting with our invocation by Police Officer Jeff Mosley with the West Covina Police Department, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Fred Sykes. Please rise.
Let us pray. God, we recognize your presence here tonight, and we thank you for the freedom we have to gather as a community in order to discuss important matters that will influence and shape the future of our city. We ask for your grace and divine blessing this evening as we address these important matters. Lord, we pray that you will give our Mayor Shelley Sanderson, Mayor Pro Tem Steve Hurford, and fellow City Council members Rob Satello, Fred Sykes, and Andrew McIntyre the ability to lead our city with integrity, humility, and compassion in accordance to your will. Give them wisdom and guidance as they work diligently to find solutions and address each of the difficult challenges at hand. Bless each and every person here tonight. Draw us closer together as a community, and help us to set the example for other communities around us. We ask this through Christ our Lord. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to the flag of our nation. Ready? Begin.
Madam City Clerk, roll call, please. Mayor Sanderson, here. Mayor Pro Tem Hurford.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Satello.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here.
Thank you so much for that. Next, we'll be reporting out from closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Records should reflect that the City Council convened in a closed session at approximately 6:20 this evening to discuss the two items listed on the special agenda. First item, conference with legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, City of Al Hammer and 46 other cities versus County of Los Angeles. Record should reflect that direction was given to settle this litigation based upon the terms and conditions discussed in closed session. However, no settlement agreement has yet been finalized, so there's no further action to report. Item number two, public employee performance evaluation pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 for the city manager. Records should reflect that direction was given to staff to prepare an agreement incorporating the terms discussed in closed session, but no reporter or final action was taken. This will conclude my report.
Mr. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
No, there's no changes to the agenda tonight.
Okay, thank you so much. And at this time is the portion of our meeting where we have our presentations, and it looks like we have a lot of people here for that. So I will come forward, and we will do some presentations. Thank you, and again, welcome, all of you. It's very nice to see a full building here and everybody being involved in our community. It means a lot to all of us, and having the kids here today is always very exciting. But before we call the kids forward, I'm going to do something that is very, very important to us as a city. When we have people that are going to be retiring, we present them with a city tile and appreciate them in a way what they've served our community has been very, very important to us. And thank you is never enough. But with that, I'd like to call forward our Fire Chief Rick Genovese, who will introduce the man of the evening, Randy Eismann. Please come forward.
Come on up. Gotta make you stand in front of everybody first. This doesn't come easy.
No, it doesn't. Never does.
So we're here to recognize Randy. Randy came to us as a volunteer auxiliary firefighter. He first served over in La Habra Heights as a volunteer, came over here, proved himself as a volunteer, and so in '85, we hired Randy as a firefighter. And some of the descriptors of Andy, or Randy, I was looking at Andy. Some of the descriptors for Randy were enthusiastic, self-starter, motivated, worked hard, and it panned out. So a couple years later, we promoted him to a firefighter, paramedic. Under that title, he was called compassionate, caring with his patients, and motivated again. There's gonna be a pattern here. And motivated, dedicated, and one captain put in his evaluation that he was the epitome of a firefighter. I don't know if you remember that.[363.00][363.00](Laughter) But the epitome of a firefighter. So that's pretty high in our evaluation process. So what we did is we promoted him to engineer in 1991. And engineer's the one that drives the fire trucks, and used to be the big ladder truck and the other engines, and they work all the hydraulics and put pressure to the lines. Well, he was great at that, too. He was very technically competent and again took on extra tasks. He's done that his whole career. So he got outstanding evaluations and was a good organizer, as we know, and planner. So we promoted him to captain in 1995. And under that category, he becomes a great trainer to everybody. Again, his files filled with outstanding evaluations and such. But he was creative, innovative, and did all of those kinds of things for us as captain. So then we promoted him to assistant chief. The assistant chief, a captain, he's in charge of one station in the city for a 24-hour period, so basically one-fifth of the city. We make him an assistant chief, so now he's in charge of all five stations, all the personnel, and all the districts in the city. Well, he was outstanding in that as well. And he was highly fiscally responsible, as our finance director and city manager would like to know. And he was a great mentor and a role model to some of the gentlemen that are back in the audience right as we speak. So he did an outstanding job. In fact, if you look at his personnel file, there's literally a stack of accolades, both from the public and from his supervisors. So bottom line is, how great is it that you can hire this young person, always highly motivated and excited about his job? 28 years later, the gentleman retires out, and the last day that he works, he's that same attitude, that same hard worker. And we'd just like to thank Randy and his family for all the selfish, selfless dedication that you've done over the 28 years. So thank you, Chief Randy Eismann. Mayor?
These are always bittersweet. I've known you for all the years I've been here. You're amazing. You've done so much for our community, and I want to personally thank you, as well as I want on behalf of the City Council and the citizens of the community to know how much, what you've done. And to all the kids standing there, this is an amazing man that has just, an inspiration, just started working hard and showing what you can do and what you can become and how you can serve people, and people appreciate it and will never forget you. And I hope you continue to come visit us and don't leave. You know, we'd love to see you around. We have a proclamation, a resolution of commendation, I'm sorry, Fire Assistant Chief Randy Eismann, on behalf of the citizens, we thank you so much for your service to our community. And we have more hardware that's gonna go with that big file of all those accolades that you've received. Of course, we always call our coveted city tile Randy Eismann, appreciative of over 28 years of dedicated service to the city of West Covina. It means a lot to us, so thank you so much. And lastly, the city of West Covina is pleased to recognize Randy Eismann for over 28 years of consistent commemorial service to the community and, of course, to his family. Thank you for lending him to us, and now we're hopefully giving him back in good shape. It's meant a lot for you to be with us. We really appreciate it again. Thank you so much. And now the mic is yours.
Oh, great. I never got used to public speaking after all these years. Madam Mayor, City Council, and staff, I just appreciate this honor. Thank you. It's been a pleasure working for the city of West Covina and having the privilege to work with the finest fire department that I know of. A great group of guys that have always had your back, and it's great to lead when you have people that basically make your job easy. So thank you, guys, the guys that are here tonight, and the rest of them. Thank you very much for being a great fire department, making my job easy. Above all, I'd like to thank my family in the audience. My mom, Don Eismann's here. You know, thank you very much, Mom, for sacrifices when I was young, everything going through. My beautiful wife Dana, thank you for all the nights I was away and, you know, the sacrifices you've made. Also here tonight, I have my son Scott and his wife Rebecca, and friends Georgina and Alma. So thank you very much for being here. My family means the world to me, and it's been a pleasure to do this job and have two families, a fire department family and this family. But above all, I couldn't have done this without God in my life either. So I thank God for the blessing of having this job and for keeping me safe and allowing me to go home and see my family and just give Him all the glory for it. So thank you very much and appreciate the accolades.
I'm going to go ahead and do something out of order, if it's okay with everybody, because I'm going to call the baseball teams up after I do our red ribbon, because we have some pizza in the top there for you guys, and I'm sure you guys don't want to miss that, right? Okay, so first, we will call forward for our Red Ribbon Week. I know it's always difficult to say, especially with braces. David Alfaro and Don Fernald with the West Covina Rotary, who will receive our proclamation for Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd through October 31st. And I'm going to have you guys, well, hello, it's always so nice to see you. We have our proclamation, which I'd like to present, and I'd also like to hand the mic over to you if you'd like to dawn. Oh, they're pointing at each other. Which one you pick?[789.62][790.62](Laughter)
Good evening. You get to do it on Saturday. This Saturday, we're celebrating the 24th year that we've done the Red Ribbon Rally. It's an opportunity to bring our children in the community together to talk about anti-drugs, staying away from those things, finding other alternatives. One of our Vine teachers here, we picked up posters from all the schools that are involved. They'll be on display. We've got trash cans decorated by all the students. And if you have the golden opportunity to be there, you'll get an opportunity to meet Kiki Camarena Jr. and Mika Camarena. That is the wife of Kiki Camarena Sr., who was killed in 1985 in Mexico trying to keep drugs from coming into our country. He was tortured. His pilot was tortured and killed. Shortly after that, in El Centro where he grew up, that's where they started the Red Ribbon Rally in 1988. Nancy Reagan, President Reagan, pushed it forward, and we've been doing it for 24 years. Next year will be our 25th year. We've got the blessing of having them come here and be part of it. So if you have an opportunity, Dave will buy you pancakes and coffee. I know he'll do it because it's free. So it starts at 7:30, we should be down around 11:30. We've got plenty of entertainment from local schools and other organizations. Fire Department, Police Department will be there. A lot of vendors talking about anti-drug type programs that they have. So please join us, and thank you very much.
What about you? Would you like to say a few words?
I just, I'd just like to say, I welcome, you know, I invite all these young men, these baseball players, and their families and all your friends. We have a great day. It's a great community event. Seems like the whole city's there, and I believe we're gonna have a helicopter come land sometime Saturday morning, and you get to check that out. But really, it's great to help educate the young people of this community, and it's, we have a really good time putting it together. We enjoy the work that it takes, and we have always, I think we're getting ready next year to celebrate our 25th year of doing it, and just, it's a great West Covina event, so please be there. Thank you very much. West Covina High School, in the blacktop, behind the gym, and we start serving pancakes at 7:30. Sometimes we start a little earlier, so if you want to get in line, that'll be great. But we also will have a lot of the young children on the stage doing some of their singing, dancing, et cetera, et cetera. So we're looking forward to that also. Thank you.
And thank you guys so much for doing that every year. I know I've taken my children, and it's just really neat to get excited to see the helicopter landing, and there's a lot of equipment that they don't get to normally see on a daily basis, and it's just a great family event, and a lot of great food and pancakes, and a lot of the community's there. So I encourage everyone to come, and again, thank you to you for being such an important part of our community that brings that to our city. So with that, I'd like to present the proclamation of Red Ribbon Week, which is October 23rd through October 31st. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Okay, it looks like there's some boys over there with some medals around their neck. Look pretty heavy. We're gonna call forward. You know, West Covina is a wonderful community of baseball, and I talked to so many people up through the community, and they say, oh, this person, you know, big leaguer, came from West Covina, and, you know, that's gonna maybe be you guys someday. So it's pretty exciting to see all you standing here today. And so we're gonna call forward first. We're gonna call our manager, John Buahak. Please come forward. Thank you. And introduce the West Covina Youth Pony Pinto Eight Red All-Stars.
Good evening. Thank you. First, I want to thank the mayor and City Council members. This is an honor to be here in front of you. And our eight-year-old team had a marvelous All-Star season this year. They won the Corona All-Star Showdown out in Corona. Our first tournament we entered, we won. We won the district championship for All-Stars, which gave us a bye through sectionals and interregions. And in regions, we had a great tournament. We had some nice comeback victories. Came a little bit short, but we had a great time doing it. So thank you for recognizing our team for their achievements. It's an honor to be here. Thank you. Also, I want to thank the parents, your dedication, bringing the kids to practices all the time, on time. Sometimes they went long, two-hour practices sometimes, and it was hot out there, and the boys were tired, but they kept coming to the practices on time and kept bringing them. So thank you, parents, also. I also want to thank my wife, the team mom, Jennifer. Coaching these kids was easy. They're a great team. I've managed a few All-Star teams over the last few years, and this was by far the best group of kids I had. They're excited to be here. Unfortunately, half of them think the Dodger game is more important, I think.[1131.15][1131.15](Laughter) But the half that are here are excited. Let me just tell you, they're excited to be here. So that being said, we'll go ahead and just call them up. First one, Justin Barlow. Next one is probably my favorite kid on the team, because he's my son, Evan Buahak. Isaac Fernandez. Joshua J.J. Juarez. Daniel D.J. Pimienta. And Jonathan Ruvalkaba. And one of my coaches this year, who was a huge help to me. He had to leave work early quite a few times to get to practices and games and stuff, Sean Barlow. Thank you, boys. It was a great season. I know this is one of our highlights, having the 2013 All-Star season, being here with the mayor and City Council members. But it's been fun, and I'm sure most of you, if not all of you, will be on All-Stars again next year. Good job, guys.
And before we do our photo op for all you parents, I'd like to recognize and thank you for your volunteerism to these kids. It means a lot, and it's just very important to our community. So thank you so much to John Buahak, manager. Congratulations. Thank you. Now, don't leave if you like pizza. If you don't like pizza, you can leave, I guess, so. I don't, you know, I did a pizza opening for a place once, and I said, I've never met anybody that doesn't like pizza. It's probably the best food that you could ever have. And with that, I'm gonna call forward, we have West Covina American Little League Mets are standing over there. Don't look little. And I'd like to call forward Coach Eddie Alvarez. Please come forward. It looks like it says the Mets are the city major tournament champions for 2013. All right, congratulations. Everybody give him a round of applause. Good job. All right, I'm gonna hand the mic over to you.
I want to get started by thanking our main manager, Frank Vias, who didn't have a kid on the team, decided to come back with his brother, Robert Vias, to coach his nephew on our team. Really good set of guys, really good set of coaches we had this year. The team did outstanding. We ended up first in regular season. The city also had a city tournament with the Little Leagues, which we represented our program out of Cortez amongst Pacific Coast and all the other West Covina National and everybody else showed up, and we ended up taking that tournament as well. We had a really successful season, really fun group of kids. Parents were really nice. We had a really outstanding year. We played out of a really good program out of Cortez Park, one of the better fields in the city. Just enjoyed, I enjoyed being out there with the kids.
Very good. Thank you so much. Now, we want to call forward the boys.
We're gonna get started with my son, Andres Alvarez, which, he's not even here. He plays, he's in a bad performance today, which...
Oh, okay. It sounds like you're a busy parent.
Yes. The next one is one of our general giants, Cairo Barber. And one of our other returning ones was Nicholas Calderon. And probably one of our quiet ones at the beginning, but became one of our pranksters, Dakota Diaz. Our next one, we had ups and downs, but had a really good season, Andrew Garcia. Chris Lara is not here as well. Our next one, kinda quiet all season, but when we needed that clutch hit, he was there for us, and that's Jamie Leo. Our other one, Andrew Madrid, is in here as well. He's out of town. Next one was one of our quiet kids that came up, was always clutch, was a magnet when he hit the ball, but unfortunately, it was always to the same person, Joshua Rodriguez, J-Rod. And joining my son at the band festival that they're having is Michael Sato, who's not here as well. Daniel Vias, our first baseman. The one I wanted to say last is, she's special to me. She's, she almost didn't come back this year. I was kinda like pulling teeth and nails, I know with the dad, Gordon, as well. Glad that she came back. She really pepped it up for us, Joanne Mize. I have two people, we usually get a team parent, and this year, we had two team parents that were there for everything and made it so simple for us to do stuff. I have Liz Barber and Erica Garcia. Our other coach kind of picked up halfway into the season. Glad he did, because he really worked with the kids really good, and he's taking a seat thinking he's not gonna come up here, but Robert Diaz. Robert and Frank Vias are both not here. They're currently at work.
And the man of the hour is Edward Alvarez, our coach. Thank you. Round of applause. Thank you so much. Next, we have American Little League Angels. I see some wings over there, right? Right, coaches? Yeah, okay. I'm gonna call forward manager Danny Hernandez. Please come forward and introduce. The Angels are the city minor tournament champions for 2013. Congratulations, and thank you so much for being here tonight. And the mic is yours.
Parents, I don't know, I'll call them council members or with the city. Mayor, I appreciate everything you're doing for us today. It's a pleasure to be here, and we deserve it, so it's a good thing. I want to say a little about something I put on the website, and I know a lot of our parents weren't able to read it because they were moving on to different things, but I want to say thank you to all the parents that were involved. It's a lot of work, a lot of practices, a lot of hours. We know how important it is to be there, so I thank each and one of you, all the way from the rowdy grandparents in the stands to the little siblings like Coop, little AJ, and all the little siblings that were involved. You guys are a true inspiration to the team, and you allow us to do... to the team, and you allow us to do on the field the work we need to do, and you guys took care of everything out of the field, which was great. So, I appreciate you, parents. Thank you very much. Team moms, Lupe, Charlene, Ginger, you guys did a great job. You guys carried everything forward like you're supposed to and had everything moving smoothly. Coaches, Jim Frosto, Roy Durham, you guys are great. You guys each could have been managers of this team easily. You guys know what you're doing and allowed for everything to run again smoothly. So, I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much. Players, you guys did a heck of a job. Very good. You guys overcame adversity a few times, and as life teaches us, overcome adversity and you move on to bigger and better things. So, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, players. So, that's all I have. Just one more thing, real quick. Mayor and council, I don't know if you knew, we brought the District 19 championship trophy back to West Covina this year. So, we won that for all of us also, so for the city. So, good job. First player I'd like to bring up, Jordan Bustamante. Nathaniel Duarte. Miller Durham. Andrew Frosto. Aaron Hernandez.
Steals for his face, doesn't he?
He's mine, too. Andrew Hernandez. AJ O'Brien. Malik Salahie. Aaron Kowenka. Let's get our team moms up here. Charlene Durham. Lupe Hernandez. Ginger Salahie. Roy Durham. Jim Frosto.
And Danny Hernandez, the manager. Round of applause. Thank you for all your hard work, Danny. We're going to take a five-minute, and everybody enjoy your pizza. Okay, the doors are closed upstairs, in case there's still people up there. We're going to go ahead and reconvene our city council meeting. Next on the agenda, we have our oral communications. We have yellow speaker cards at the top of the stairs, and I'll remind the speakers, you have a five-minute speaking limit, and to please address the council as a body. With that, I will call our first speaker, which is Lola Finley.
Good evening. Thank you for listening to me speak and ask this question. I'm just bringing up something. I know you're going to close us out on our, what we asked about the safety in our community. At that time, we brought up the rental ordinance, because we do have a high rental property in our neighborhood of condos, townhouses, apartments, things like that. And at that time, you guys said you guys were going to look at it, Covina, Azusa, all the local cities who also implemented this ordinance. And I was under the impression... And then, in the next meeting, city council meeting, I was told, and Shelley, your secretary had called me and tried to set some appointments, but it never went, came through. And at the city council meeting, I was told that I was going to be included in that meeting, and then I was sent an email stating that isn't the case. I'm not going to be included, which is, I understand, not being included. But then, I asked if I could get a rough draft of the ordinance. And the reason why I want to see a rough draft, because I know there's money involved. And when it comes to vote, I want to make sure that I'm not against something that I propose. So, I would like, and my neighbors would like to have the opportunity to see the rough draft or draft whatever it is before it's presented. And so, basically, I just want to get a response, and, you know, if you can understand my concern that I have, just want to know, would look at the ordinance before, because I don't want to be against my own ordinance that I put out. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Norma Ingram.
Hello to Mayor Sanderson and other members of the city council and city officials. I'm here to support the implementation of the Centenarian Program that I see that you have on the agenda. And I have a personal interest, because my mother, who will be turning 100 years old on November 28th of this year, and I had approached Councilman Sykes, and I'd asked him, you know, about possibly getting a proclamation or resolution from our city council. She's been a resident here for 18 years. I've been a resident for 35, and she came to live with me. And I just think that it's a wonderful thing, if any of us make it to 100 years, that we should get all kinds of recognition. And so, I'm here to advocate and hope that you will consider passing such a measure, so that people of that age will get recognition. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Juan Reynoso.
Good evening, mayor, council members. Over a year ago, I requested some public records for the graffiti program, which, of course, were denied. All I asked for was the logs, the daily logs of what is actually being done out there. Now, according to the, according to the city's council, these records fall under investigative material, which this is the only city that is actually taking that approach. We have stacks. This is a normal, normal protocol for public contractors to actually see what's going on in a city. And I'd like to know, why is it that these records are not being released? Now, the irony, of course, is that the contractor, from what I understand, happens to be the brother of a commissioner, appointed commissioner for the city. And in fact, that same commissioner, I believe, is the one that's doing the graffiti removal out there. There's two ways that these records are being kept. One is the daily log that the contractor must provide, should provide, we're paying for it. So, I think that we should be privy to what is being done out there, and if in fact, that work is being done or not. Another one is, there's graffiti tracker, of which the city brags about, that the graffiti is actually out there. Every site supposedly is being photographed, GPSed, so that it could be tracked. Those records are also public. Every city has those records public. I'd really like to see those records. I'd like to know what is being done. Obviously, as many of you know, that is my business. That is the nature of the business that I'm in, and I'm also a resident of the city. So, I please, I ask that these records be released. Now, of course, the only other option for me is to do what, you know, most people have to do here, is sue the city. I do not want to sue the residents, because we lose. So, please just release those records. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jeremy Enfreca.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I have a confession to make. I'd rather not be speaking in front of you tonight. It's been six years since I've last done so. But recent events have compelled me to come back, and four fifths of you sitting in front of me probably won't like what I have to say. In 2007, against the wishes of the neighbors in my neck of the woods, you approved 20 condominiums to be built despite enormous outpouring of opposition against that project. You didn't listen to the neighbors. Thank goodness for the recession and ground was never broken. Recently, we came to learn that this project has been on the planning commission agenda for quite some time as a pending item. Neighbors, including myself, have been actively seeking answers as to why this is so. As of today, we do not feel satisfied with the answers that we have received. About a month ago, I called Mr. Herbert to ask for a meaning to gain some assistance in the matter. His response to me on the phone included, quote, "I'm too busy," and quote, "I know the politics in your neighborhood." This is not a political matter. I have no aspirations whatsoever to be on your side of the podium. I have a simple expectation, and that is, if I call on an elected leader that "I need help," I'm not going to be brushed off. I was brushed off. The arrogance and dismissive attitude of Mr. Herbert is not acceptable in the position of elective leader, of an elected leader in West Covina. That is bad PR. Councilman Setello, the neighbors have not forgotten that as a member of the planning commission...
Excuse me, sir. Could you please direct your comments to the council as a body? Thank you.
The neighbors have not forgotten that Councilman Setello, as a member of the planning commission, also voted yes on the same condominium project that the residents vehemently opposed. Recently, developer Andy McIntyre stated at the League of Women Voters' candidate briefing that he would not shove multiple family units down the throats of single-family neighborhood. Well, that wasn't his position six years ago, when he stood in my living room and rolled out the blueprints for 20 condos, feet, just several feet where my children play. That, my friends, is bad PR. Last week, a rather articulate gentleman, Mr. Wilkins, asked very professionally and politely for the city to look into park usage patterns for the Ridge Riders Park. Mayor Sanderson rather petulantly responded, "If you're questioning the park, well, you must not like children." Again, a shining example of the irresponsible remark from an elected civic leader. I invite Mayor Sanderson to audit the use of Walmarado Park, where the children honored here tonight have to deal with some rather deplorable conditions, where my children play baseball, where we, every time we go to the park, we have to skirt around heroin addicts that rather loudly talk about the proper methods of shooting up. We also have to dash around parents that are drinking in the parking lot in amounts that seem to exceed what you would see in the parking lot of a Dodger game. I also have to tell my children, "Use the bathroom before we go to the game, because the bathroom at the park is not safe in the daytime or the nighttime, and it's not clean." What does this say about Mayor Sanderson's positions on children, including my own, that yearn for a clean park conditions that exist in other parts of the city but not mine? That's bad PR. In summary, the city of West Covina deserves better. We don't deserve to be patronized. We don't deserve to be brushed off when we have a question or a concern. We're more intelligent, proactive, and articulate than most of you realize. The children of West Covina deserve better. We need elected city council members that will not succumb to the allure of developer money and will truly look out for our best interests. The next time I'm here, I'm hoping it's some different faces in front of me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Shirley Buchanan.
Good evening, Mayor Sanderson, Mayor Protem Herbert, and members of the council. I have here a document that's dated October 21st, 2003, First Amendment to Maintenance and Operation Agreements, and this applies to the Big League Dreams Park. And it's signed by Steve Herbert, mayor, Janet Berry, Arnold Glasman, and Scott Parks, chief executive officer. And the reason why I'm showing you this is, it is a public document, and what's in here is public. I'm asking for the help of these youth city council people for some documents, and they're in here. They're named in this document here. After making several yearly appearances at council meetings requesting that the city provide me with an annual financial report for Big League Dreams Sports Park on Azusa, I received a letter from the city attorney advising me that the city is not required by the agreement to make public an annual financial report. I accepted that. I have since reread this First Amendment to Maintenance and Operation Agreement, and would like to read the following excerpt from the public document between Big League Dreams West Covina and the city of West Covina. Unless, it's item 8.1, page 3, unless waived as provided in subsection A below Big League Dreams West Covina shall pay to the city quarterly in arrears with respect to each calendar quarter during the term of any extended terms, a maintenance and operation fee in the amount set forth below but not later than the applicable quarterly P&amp;L statement must be delivered by Big League West Covina to the city. That means that this city gets a quarterly P&amp;L statement, which is public. Page 4, third complete paragraph, states, "Upon the city's receipt of the annual P&amp;L statement, the party shall make any financial adjustments to the fees owed by Big League Dreams West Covina for the past operating year." I realize that there's a couple of things involved in here, because it speaks about fees, but my most important part of this section is that there is property P&amp;L statements that are given to the city annually every year. Since the maintenance and operation fee document with Big League Dreams West Covina and the city is a public document, I would like an appointment at the finance department no later than October 31st, 2013, to review all copies of the annual profit and loss statements. than October 31, 2013, to review all copies of the annual profit and loss statements from Big League Dreams West Covina, beginning with 2008 forward to 2012, that is required in the Maintenance and Operating Agreement on page 3. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Herb Redholtz.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council, and everyone here. I am Herb Redholtz, West Covina resident. I've got two quick items. First of all, I want to remind everyone that a very important day is coming. Three weeks from today is Election Day. A lot of people that are permanent mail voters, mail-in ballot voters, are currently voting. And I would urge all of you, registered voters, to exercise your right. Use the most powerful tool you have, and that is your vote. That is your voice. Use your voice, be heard, participate, and vote. That's number one. Number two, I have, I see Shannon is not here tonight, but I have kudos for Shannon Yahtzee and his staff in the Public Works Department, along with the contractor that was used for the recent reconfiguration of the intersection of Amar and Azusa. I live just east of that intersection, and I traverse it several times a day. And that was a major undertaking that needed to be done, and frankly, it could have been a nightmare. But most of the major work was done in the evening. The way it was planned and laid out, it was in such a way that traffic, and that's probably the busiest intersection in West Covina and one of the busiest in the county, was able to move relatively freely. And the work is now done, and the three people are getting used to, the three left-turn lane pockets that, from southbound Azusa onto eastbound Amar, they seem to be catching on to it. And I think it was a good idea, and will make things continually move smoother through that very busy intersection. I simply would ask that at this time, since the work is completed, that a review be made of the synchronization of the traffic signals, because it seems to be that it's not really in sync with the new three left-hand turn lanes. It seems like that, it used to go a lot quicker. I mean, it used to have more time when there were two lanes, and now that there's three and more cars going through, it just seems like it's pretty quick. So I think a review of the synchronization would be in order to really get the maximum benefit out of the configuration. But again, people, vote either by mail or in three weeks, and let your voice be heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Corey Warshaw.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, I'd like to speak on item five, the two new officers. I want to congratulate you on bringing that up. As we all know, in this city, we've been down to 90 sworn officers after having 127 officers, and they're much needed. Actually, two is not even close to being enough. My concern is why we're only hiring two. I read some literature today that was put out favoring some of the appointed candidates that says there are $13 million in unrestricted general fund cash reserves. Now, if we have $13 million in cash reserves, number one, why did we cut the number of officers? Number two, why aren't we hiring more? I've heard talk that we haven't gotten a new hook and ladders because we don't have the money. $13 million is a lot of reserves, and I just don't understand why we haven't used that in the last few years. I've heard that we didn't have money, and now all of a sudden, we've got that. So I'm concerned with that. I've heard that we have to look at county fire, because we don't have the money to pay our firefighters. That $13 million would sure help, and that's after the people of West Covina have already said by a 70 to 30 percent, we don't want county. So if you can answer those questions for me, it would be much appreciated.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Dora Gomez.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tim, and Councilmembers. My name's Dora Gomez, and I'm here on behalf of Project 2911, a community development corporation. And I'm here specifically to thank Councilmember Robert Sotelo. And I'll be more specific in a minute, but let me tell you a little bit about the programs that come under Project 2911. Basically, our motto is "Beats Any Change Alive." And our programs and services we provide are specifically designed to help individuals and families to improve their quality of life and become self-sufficient members of their community. And some of the programs that we have, one of them is STEPUP, which is an acronym for Student Tutoring and Enrichment Program, and this is an after-school tutoring, and we work with different school districts. Our Economic Relief Center is our food bank. Clothing Rack are our higher hope, which offers assistance to those who currently are unemployed by providing job listings, one-on-one job counseling, help with resume preparations, and also training classes. We also have under the Economic Relief Center, it's called Second Harvest, and that's a team of volunteers that picks up bread, pastries daily, and delivers them to other food banks, senior homes, and children's homes in the East San Gabriel Valley. Our community service programs encompass our Back to School Blast, and we had one large event, which about 20 to 30 percent of the people that attend that are from West Covina, according to our records. We try to get addresses, so we know where those people are coming from. And approximately 2,300 attended that event. We gave out 73 free haircuts and 180 vouchers, because we ran out of time. And we had a couple of beauty schools come to help us. They did their haircuts. 450 came through our health unit area, and that was provided by the Lions Club, provided the health units, and this was dentists, medical doctors, and optometrists providing a basic screening. We had 15 different agencies with information, such as WIC, Options, Edison, and others. Taco Bell of Covina partnered with us, and everybody that attended and registered was provided with a free meal. Now, backpacks distributed on this day, and I love this number, 1,550 backpacks with all the school supplies needed for, you know, that were in there. This is from papers, pencils, and everything else. And last year, we had 1,100 backpacks, and we ran out. And this is where I want to thank Councilman Sotelo for helping us to connect with the American Legion. With their contribution, it enabled us to buy an additional 100 backpacks this past year. And again, thank you, Councilmen. Now, we are currently getting ready for Thanksgiving, and this is another area. I am going to say one thing. I'm supposed to be retired. I'm going to go back to work, because retirement in this area, I don't have a lot of free time. Because, but I love it. I love it. I really do. Now, we are currently getting ready for Thanksgiving. The last year, we handed out 250 turkeys, and our goal this year is 500. And we tell everybody that when you buy a turkey for Thanksgiving, to get an extra one and give it to us, and we will be glad to hand it out to help families celebrate Thanksgiving. Now, we would like to have the turkeys by November 22, so we can get them distributed before Thanksgiving. And if you would like to contribute either a turkey or monetarily, we have, or have any questions, please call our office at 626-337-2976, or go to our website at project2911.net. In December, we are having our community Christmas party. On that one, we host a holiday party, and we, for the entire family, and we start off with a pancake breakfast. Now, we are asking everybody in the East San Gabriel Valley to partner with us and help our community. The government has already stated that they're going to be cutting back on a lot of different programs that some families currently receive. And we know the program that will feel the biggest impact will be our food bank. And so we are asking again for people to help--
Madam Mayor, Speaker's seat, there are five minutes.
Again, thank you, Councilman Sotelo, and you can contact our office or go to our website for any additional information. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Forrest Wilkins.
Greetings, Mayor, City Council. Mayor, last meeting, you made reference to me without saying my name, but I was the only person who addressed Ridge Riders and Maverick Field. You said, "I must not like children, because I want to sell a park." Forty years ago this month, my wife and I moved into our home on Glen Allen Avenue. Cortez Park has been our neighborhood park. '74 to '79, my wife and I were foster parents to 12 children from the County of Los Angeles. We adopted six, who became available for adoption. Then my wife became pregnant. All said and done, we have 11 children. 2003 to 2005, I served on the West Covina Unified School Board, serving approximately 10,000 students from K through 12. And the mayor says, "I must not like children." Oh, then the mayor's statement of selling parkland. "Mayor, do you recall the land in the south end of town, commonly known as Shakespeare Park?" I will read from the minutes of the city council meeting dated 12/303. "Mayor Pro Tim Herbert asked for a motion to approve an amendment to the purchase and sale agreement with Abel Halloo for the purchase of the former Shakespeare Park sale. Motion by Miller and seconded by Sanderson to sell the park. Motion carried four to zip, two E abstaining. So Sanderson seconded the motion to sell the park and voted to sell the park. Let the record reflect, I do like children, and I never voted to sell parkland in the city of West Covina."
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Cameron Saylor.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Cameron Saylor, 23-year West Covina resident, Maverick Field developer, 23 years, 22 years ago with the city council. Excuse me. I want to talk about some of the positives that go on at the city and talk about some of the misnomers that go on over at Maverick Field as a whole. And I'm going to, hopefully, I don't run over five minutes, there's a lot here to talk about. But today out there, we have four user groups that use the facility. There's the West Covina Dukes, there's the Arsenal, there's the Bombers and the South Hills High School. There are six past Little League presidents that have come through that park, and three current past Little League presidents, and one pony president, that are involved in the West Covina Dukes program today. Heavily involved from the parents and coaches that go through this program, of which we have 16 West Covina residents of the 21 coaches and volunteers that are out there today. Five, the other five were past West Covina residents. This is a heavily influenced West Covina program. Volunteers, 10 of those 16 current volunteers today do not have a son or child in the program. We do it for the love of the game and the kids in this program. Last season, 90 percent of the West Covina residents that tried out for the program made the team, sometimes, or made one of the teams. Sometimes, they're just kids that are not qualified to play, and there's a safety issue that come on. And we put a high emphasis on the city of West Covina residents and childrens every day. We do a winter workout. We have 120 to 160 kids every year that come out to our winter workouts. This year, we'll have Tony Gwynn and his brother Chris Gwynn out there with us as well. Of that, any West Covina resident that cannot pay for that winter workout, which is $30, is four times, they get a T-shirt and 15 hours' worth of instruction. It's free to those residents. We had a baseball clinic this year, the Arsenal did, with Jackie Robinson Foundation. We went out, we taught kids at Dodger Stadium this year. And a recollection that came back this year, Major League Baseball and the Dodgers and the Cal Ripken Foundation came to Maverick Field. We had 160 kids there, of which 120 were West Covina residents. Four Dodgers were out there, Rue, League, Michael Young. Michael Young is a former West Covina Duke, played through the program here as well, current Dodger, came through, and that was a free clinic to every West Covina resident, or every kid that actually showed up. But 120 of those were West Covina residents. We have open workouts for any West Covina kid that wants to come out and develop their baseball skills. They can come out, work with any of the four West Covina Duke teams out there. We call, they come in, they can work out with our teams at any given time, no charge, and as many times as they want to. As a whole, 15 percent of our total annual budget is given to scholarships, and that goes back to the children that come to the program, that make the team. If you make one of our teams, it doesn't matter if you can pay or not, you're in the program. And 15 percent of our total budget every year goes back to what we call scholarships. We have an online reservation system for the new $60,000 batting cage that we just built. That is open to those young men that just came in here today. It is free of charge. That whole entire system was built without a dollar from the city of West Covina. It sits out in front, and we are continuing to finish that today. And any resident or any user group from the city of West Covina is welcome to use that facility through reservation, free of charge. We'll even give them lessons if they want to at the same time. That's part of what we do out there. We are partnering this year with the Greater West Covina Group for a golf tournament that's going to benefit the Marchadines and the children's hospitals as well. We just formed a new nonprofit, 501(c)(3) this year, Dukes Arsenal and the RJ Foundation back in this last April. The facts are real simple. We spend $30,000 a year to maintain that facility without a nickel of city assistance that goes on out there. We spent a quarter million dollars in facility improvements in the last eight years, and that's, in the last seven years I've been running the Dukes program myself, but 22 years involve a Maverick Field. With $60,000 batting cage, talk about 26 years we've been around. The Dukes are the oldest travel baseball program in the country and the winningest travel baseball program in the country. We're nationally known, from USA Baseball to just about anywhere we travel in the country, they know the West Covina Dukes, they know Maverick Field. We host regional tournaments every year. We have special deals with local residents or with local merchants, hotels, and restaurants that you can only get in the city of West Covina that drive. People here that travel in, that come in for West Regionals and teams that spend in our hotels and nights and days, and money in our restaurants and the sporting goods stores that you can only get at our local West Covina stores. You can't get these deals at that chain store outside of the city, and we've negotiated those deals with them. Some of the components we talked about are the ancillary impact that go on out here. Well, actually, let me back up a little bit. Of the user groups, there are 40, 40 percent of it Dukes, 19 percent of the time is the Arsenal, 14 percent of Dukes, 24 percent is South Hills High School, 4 percent is unaccounted for. But on top of all the maintenance that we do, 100 percent of that--
Sorry, Madam Mayor, the Speaker's seat is five minutes.
I'm going to go just a couple seconds longer, if that's okay. May I ask? Of that, there are still rental fees that do come in from two other user groups, that South Hills High School and the Bombers, that total $12,000 to $15,000 a year while the Dukes take care of the entire facility. Ancillary income, there's over 500 games, or 400 games, 500 practices a year, about 100,000 visitors to this park every year. If every visitor just spent $10 a year, that's a lot of dollars in terms of revenue to our local guys. If it's 50, simple. If it's 100, even more. I know what I pay for a tank of gas on an ongoing basis. We think the number, based on the folks driven through there, support our economy, about from $5 to $7 million a year. I just wanted to state some of those facts tonight, and thank you. If anybody questions what this council's doing, look at the City Discover Magazine this month. It tells a lot about this city and the council and the planning that's gone on. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lloyd Johnson.
Lloyd Johnson, West Covina resident for over 40 years. Once again, first, I would like to remind our city attorney once again that it is a Brown Act violation to deny anyone coming up here and asking a council member a question. Now, I would like to compliment this year, so far, this is the first year I've gone to my mailbox, and I haven't seen any negative attacks against anybody that is running for any of the offices in the city of West Covina. And I commend all those for that. You know, we have, those who are running, they have their issues, and you can agree with them or disagree with them. But I feel as long as you make the issues an issue and no personal attacks, I think that's great, and I commend everybody for doing that. And another thing that was brought up tonight, and I do have to say, it was brought up about the graffiti. You know, I've gone on a few ride-alongs with our contractor, Lynn Kennedy. First thing he does when he pulls up to it, he takes his camera out, takes a picture of it, and he documents it before he removes it. I've gone out with him quite a few times, and I feel he's doing a great job. So that covers that. that. Another thing I'd like to cover, and it wasn't advertised by the clinic, the health clinic over here on fifteen hundred West Covina Parkway, and it was too bad, because this last Saturday, they had a free health clinic over there. They had a little car show with it. But the good part about it was, is that everything was free. They gave free flu shots, they gave free blood tests. The blood test they gave, you could like five or different things come out of your blood. And they also did blood pressure tests, and I found out mine's a little high. So, but I told them, like, next year when they do it, make sure they bring it to the city council. You know, if we really want to get out, I mean, this was free. You get your free blood tests, you get your free flu shots and stuff like that. And it was a shame that they didn't do it, but I hope next year they'll do it. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Schumaker.
If I may briefly, Madam Mayor, address the Speaker's concerns about the Brown Act?
Absolutely.
The government code, section five-four-nine-five, five-four-nine-five, four-point-three authorizes the city impose reasonable content-neutral time, place, and manner restrictions on public comments. That would be the duration and the manner of addressing the city council. The city has done this by requiring members of the public to address comments to the city council as a body, as opposed to individual members, without, again, consideration to the content of the Speaker's comments. These regulations further the orderly decorum of the city's public meetings and are authorized not only by the Brown Act but free speech considerations.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is John Schumaker.
If you can give me your address, I'll send you the letter I received from the DA saying that if you interrupt somebody and they walk away, it's a violation. If they keep talking, then it is not. Quick question. After listening to all those wonderful things that go on over at Maverick Field, I'm trying to figure out why we don't expand it. Seems like they're constrained because of the area that they're in. Maybe we ought to have a larger baseball field and complex like that because of the thousands of people you, you know, you serve and how well it does in the community. It sure beats, you know, the few horses that are running over there. The other thing that I, I found rather interesting, and since I follow things that are financial, was the flyer that came out that Corey Worshaw talked about, that said, "We have reserves of thirteen million dollars." Now, I know you guys, two of you did not pay for it because it's another company that did it. But, you know, if that's true, you know, I, I would hope that on the agenda item tonight, you'll take ten million of it, reserve it off, put it into an account that can only be used to pay for police and fire and other public safety personnel. I figured you could hire at least reasonably twenty people that would be paid for for the next five years on that. Be a great benefit to our community, more fire, more police. You know, and if it isn't true that we have thirteen million dollars, I would hope that those same two council members would come out and say that they disavow that statement. You know, it might have been a typo. They might have meant point one-three, which would be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. They might have meant one-point-three, which would be one-point-three million, which is probably a little bit closer to everything I've heard, unless we got a big windfall that nobody's told us about. And I figure in five years, we should have the auto dealerships open again. You know, at least we can only hope. But then a lot of us thought that would be the case five years ago. So, we kind of take it, take it from there. So, or, you know, better yet, maybe we cut back a couple million dollars and use that, that two million dollars or a little bit more to make sure that we fund the soccer fields. That way, we don't have to wait for park fees to come in. Because after all, since about two thousand three, we've ignored those poor people and those kids and things like that. You know, in this campaign, looking at different people's, you know, Form 60s and things like that, I was wondering why all these developers want to do business in our city. I got up here one night and said, "Does anybody go to jail if we tell the state, 'No, we're not going to accept money for, you know, very, very low-income housing and things like that'? I mean, who really benefits from it?" And I was looking at the backup on this thing, and it said, "In order to incent developers." I went, "Ha-ha. That's why, to incent developers." I don't know about you, if I can make money at something, I'm probably going to do it. You know, so what, you know, the more incentives you give me, doesn't really, now I know why they're so hot on it. But what's immensely amusing about this is what a lot of people don't understand, is, you know, like, the senior housing, which is definitely needed, and it was great, and it's beautiful, and it helps a lot of people. People don't realize that we gave millions of dollars to a developer to build it. No interest loan, no payment loan. And the only requirement is that they keep it as senior housing or low-income housing for ninety-nine years. Well, if I don't have to pay anything for a piece of land, once it goes up high enough, they can sell it, and it doesn't have to be senior anymore. They just have to pay the money back. Hmm, kind of interesting, isn't it? Interest-free loans for a number of years, ten million dollars turns into thirty, you sell it. Those people are thrown out on the street, and the developer walks away with all that money they made all that time. Because there's no requirement that it stays that way. So, you know, as you talk about these, you know, why not just say, just say, "We don't want, you know, the super-high-rise housing and things like that." There are some areas that it could belong in, you know, this downtown area and those types of things that people are looking at, most definitely. But we don't want it in other places. We don't want it in neighborhoods. You know, so just say no to that, because then you don't have to worry about the incentives for developers. And it takes away an issue that the people who are going to receive those develop, those incentives are the same ones supporting certain members of this council. Takes that completely off the table. Makes everybody look really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Marcia Hazleton.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. My name is Marcia Hazleton. I've been a member of Saint Stephen Missionary Baptist Church for thirty-five years and a resident of West Covina for thirty-eight years. I'm here this evening to speak on the Centennial Recognition Program. On November the twenty-ninth, Saint Stephen Missionary Baptist Church will celebrate Mother Grace Gozburl's one-hundredth birthday. She was born November twenty-ninth, nineteen thirteen. I'm asking that the city council please consider the approval and implementation of a recognition program for all of the young one-hundred-year-old members of West Covina for recommendations of, some type of awards, some type of recognition, because if we make it to be a hundred, it'll be a blessing, and I think that we need to recognize everybody that turns one hundred. And I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, it looks like Trudy Saltmarsh. Sorry if I-
Thank you for being here. That's okay. My name is Trudy. I know, I was having trouble with the pencil. That's all right. By the way, again, this is, this is great. Thank you very much for providing this. Our neighborhood became very concerned about the increase of crime, and one of our neighbors, Mrs. Finley, she formed a group, and she got us involved in the city and trying to get things better. And one of the issues we brought to the council is regarding rental ordinances. She did a lot of research, brought it forward, the research that she did. She, she is a landlord in the city of Covina where they have these laws. She called around. Anyway, she put, put a lot of effort into it. And now she's told that she can have no involvement in the drafting of the ordinance. I don't understand that. Do not understand it at all. She has practical experience, she's done the research, she's, she's trying to help, okay? And we all want this, because we've had problems in my area, okay? So, I, I am concerned, because too many landlords don't live here, and they just look at these properties as cash cows. They don't care. They don't care about my quality of life, and I don't accept that. My quality of life is important to me, and I want properties kept up, and I want to know that they're not being encouraged to harbor criminals here. And we all know the state is dumping a lot of criminals right now. So, we don't want to have a situation where we're attracting them. So, I'm asking that you rethink your position and allow her to be involved. She's a representative of our whole neighborhood there, okay? One minor thing, when, at last council meeting I was at, it was agreed that on the front page of our publication, information involving how to contact people about the graffiti, where, I mean, I don't know where to call. So, it was to be published so that we could all see it and know who to call and get something done about it. So, I would appreciate it if you would readdress that and see if it could be done. And again, I agree with the speaker about the changes to the intersection, but he's right. The lights are not synchronized yet, and that would really help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and that concludes our old communications. I'll first make a brief comment. We can only briefly address non-agendized items, because according to the law, it's not been agendized for anybody else in the public to hear about it, to be here. But we can briefly kind of point you to the right department, if possible, and contact our city manager's office at six-two-six-nine-three-nine-eight-four-zero-one. And we'd be more than glad to help you, but I just want to make sure, if it doesn't seem like I'm answering directly a question, if it's not on the agenda, we really, because we don't have the backup documentation either. So, I'm going to briefly go down on this rental ordinance. Staff, I know that, you know, you talked about a rough draft and there's no involvement. Is there something that you may want to just briefly say that could cover that, Mr. City Manager?
Well, yes, staff. First of all, I think it's important that the residents realize that the council gave direction to, to essentially follow the Covina ordinance. That, since the Covina ordinance is based upon the Covina Municipal Code, the staff has to, you know, it's with the city attorney right now, and they're redrafting it to, to specify and fit in within our municipal code. So, it's just not a simple ordinance that we can just pass. It's something that we need to make sure that it fits within our own municipal code. The, the drafting of that is essentially the same language that Covina adopted, so there won't be any variation as far as the, what's, what's in there. The only, the only difference is, is that as far as specifying who will do the inspections, that will be changed to really be a code enforcement issue and not a building issue. So, we will be making those changes. The, the changes will be presented to a community meeting and, and discussed with, with all interested parties, including businesses, and, I mean business to the property owner that rents the property out. They will have an opportunity to also review it and give their feedback on that. And, you know, we're not looking to add anything more into that other than what the council gave me direction, which is to follow that, that ordinance as drafted in Covina.
Thank you very much, and I think that's clear that everybody's going to have an opportunity before it comes to council to discuss and, and make sure everybody's happy with it. Okay. All right, that's what I heard. I think that's what was said. Okay. Then there was a question of some public record graffiti. I don't have that information and documentation. Maybe we can get with that speaker or get somebody from staff to, to call them or meet with them so that they can get that, whatever information is there. I'm not, I apologize, I'm not familiar with that item.
Yeah, and if I can just, just add in something. The, the information that they talked about with respect to taking pictures, those are provided to the police department, in which they use for ongoing investigations. So, I believe that based upon that, that becomes part of the investigation. It's not considered public information, as it's being used by the police department to, to try to catch some of these people that are actually doing the graffiti. So, and with respect to the public records request that was made over a year ago, I believe that there was a response on that, but we can also look into that more and provide additional response.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then we'll drop down. There was a question in reference to Big League Dreams. I know that speaker that I, you know, we met some time ago and went over the whole project and thought we were good on it, but I guess there's some additional questions. Maybe they can contact that speaker, the speaker can contact-
Certainly, Madam Mayor. We'll track down the original request. Regarding BLD's, you know, financial statements, those are proprietary tax information that are the property of BLD, to the extent that the city is in possession of those documents. The release of those could in fact leave the city civilly vulnerable for releasing those documents. So, and there are exclusions in the PRA, Public Records Act, to withhold those documents.
Okay. Because I know that there was some, but then there was some information that was released, that they could legally release, that I thought that the speaker was okay with. So, maybe we can just make sure that there's, if we understand the question and make sure to get back to her on that. And then I have one, there was a question in reference to why we're only hiring two officers. I don't know if we want to just discuss that during the item, if that's okay with council. Maybe you can, because that's an agendized item tonight, so we can talk about that. So, the speaker knows that we will talk about that when the item comes up. And then I think that was all, unless there's any other counsel. I, I do want to briefly say, I know there was an issue of some, some parks. If those of you that don't know, I, my property's adjacent to Ridge Riders and Maverick Field, and at the last meeting, somebody had come forward and said they wanted to build condos there. And, you know, it's, it's sad, because it's a beautiful place. And so, that's kind of, if you're kind of wondering, putting things together as to what happened. And I just want to say, I'm very sorry to anybody that does use the park. I was out there on Friday. I don't, I don't go out too much, because both my horses are retired. And there was a lady that pulled up in this big van, and she unloaded several people that were in wheelchairs, and they just sit in the park. And then, they were all so excited, you know, they got to see the horses. I actually helped her wheel over. One of the gals that wanted to pet the horses, I have one that doesn't bite. I have one that does bite, so I tell them, "Don't pet him." And it's just really neat, and I said, "Thank you for being there." And then another people trailered in, and they went for a trail ride. And, you know, the interesting thing is unfortunate, I'd say, I'm very sorry to those that do enjoy the park, because I don't know why people would come here other than me to say hurt things, and I, and I'm so sorry for that. I would never want to do that. It's so great to see the horse shows there over the weekends. Oh, and Sunday, we had a police training. So, our mounted team still is active, and as a matter of fact, we're hoping to do the Christmas parade. I don't think I'm going to be able to do on my horse, because I don't think he's ready. But anyway, it's just, I just wanted to say, if I've caused any animosity towards why somebody want to get rid of something so amazing, and just to see the kids come down on their bikes and get all excited to see a horse and pet them. And so, anyway, I just wanted to make that comment. And I see a hand over there, Mr. Snacks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the speakers, the last speaker, I believe she asked about the contact for graffiti. If you come in contact with me, all you have to do is go through your records. If you have, if you have my business card, you have the number to graffiti. Furthermore, if you can, if you do not have access to the internet at your home, if you have a smartphone whereby you can get on the internet, you'll be able to go to www.westcovina.org, and the number is there on our webpage. And there's also a link to the police department, which has the number for graffiti on its website. So, everyone that's listening, please take advantage of that. That helps keep our city looking much better than when it's there. Thank you.
Thank you so much for bringing that up. I don't know, Mr. City Manager, if we have that in the Discover, or we can make sure that's really big so that people can see that.
Yeah, actually, it is being planned for the future additions. The, at the point in time the speaker did come up and talk, we've already had that addition already in place. So, we were not able to make those changes at that time. Also, I want to address all, also, there's a speaker that mentioned Walmarado Park and, and, you know, mentioned heroin addicts and, and parents drinking, you know, I guess alcohol at the park. I encourage the, anybody that sees that type of use to contact the police department. We want to be vigilant and protect our kids and make sure our park's safe. And if they, you know, if we avoid it, then it's still going to happen. If we do something about it, we can stop that, that type of inappropriate use. And with respect to the conditions of the parks, you know, I will talk with my, with my departments just to check up on that.
Sure.
Because we want to make sure that our parks are clean, our bathrooms are clean, and that we do a better job on maintaining it. So, I just want to add that in there.
Thank you so much. And also, I have, Councilmember Sotelo has given me the number for the graffiti, which is six-two-six-nine-three-nine-eight-eight-oh-oh. So, any of you out watching or whatever, jot that down. I actually have it like on my phone, so if I see it. But the nice thing is, I don't see it that much anymore, so we're doing good. So, if you do see it, go ahead and call at nine-three-nine-eight-eight-oh-oh. Any other comments? If not, we'll move on with the agenda.
I'd like to just respond to a couple speakers. First off, the centenarian program, we wholeheartedly all support that. It's something that, as mayor, we always had the ability to give the centenarian person any kind of declaration that was requested. And this will just formalize the process, so we're, we're all a hundred percent behind that. We voiced that last, at the last meeting. One of the things as a, as elected official is you do have a record, and Mr. Wilkins pointed- and Mr. Wilkins pointed out Shakespeare Park, which was basically an undevelopable piece of property down there unless you did some major grading. And I did vote to sell that property, you're correct. But if you look at the record over 23 years of the stuff that we've done in the city, we've added over hundreds of acres of parkland to this city. We built Heritage Park over on Cameron. We built Hurst Ranch over on Orange Avenue. We built Big League Dreams, which is a park owned by the city. We built, we basically took no historical projects in the city to major areas where we do have historical facilities now. We preserve the history. And one of the reasons that we're able to do some of this stuff is we keep the politics out of it. And it's important, when we talk about sports leagues and we talk about historical things in the city, and we talk about our Veterans Memorial and things like that, is if you can take the politics out of it, and you can take people who come up and say some outrageous things out of it, we achieve stuff. And that's the success of West Covina. When you look at Maverick Field, in 1977, when I played there, it was Gopher Hold and it was Old Horse Passage. It was old horse areas for them to graze, basically. And in 1991, a group was formed called Maverick Development, which was a public-private partnership, and one of numerous projects in the city that have been successful with public-private partnerships. And we were able to partner with them, and they raised money, and we were able to contribute a little bit. And we basically used hard labor and built that facility. And today, it's one of the premier ballparks in the nation, and is used by a lot of kids, and a lot of West Covina residents have gone through there. The same thing with Hurst Ranch, which is a terrific historical facility. If you haven't been to, that's a public-private partnership too, where Joe Hurst, the owner of the property, donated it to the city. And basically, we have gone together and preserved the history of West Covina and a lot of displays, and we have a farm over there and other things. So when you take the politics out of the stuff, and I realize it's election time and people are trying to make issues out of some of the things in West Covina, it really is important that we all look at what we have in the city, and we have some great stuff. Every city around here would love to have Big League Dreams. It's a gem. Not only does it bring in revenue to the city, it brings in people that shop in our stores and eat at our restaurants and stay at our hotels. Same thing with Ridge Riders, Maverick Field. We have horse shows there. We have people that come in and play tournaments there. And remember, we used to do television shows in the city. I did a show called The Economics of a Baseball Tournament, and I interviewed people that came to the city from Utah and Oregon and Washington, and they stayed in our hotels and they ate at the restaurant. There's a lot of revenue that the city derives from those type of facilities. So all I, you know, I understand where some people stand on certain issues. As our job up here is to represent 118,000 people, we're going to have differing point of views, and that's fine. But realize that there's a lot of volunteers out there that put in a lot of time, and when somebody makes a statement up here like, you know, we're going to get rid of something, it's very sensitive because their belief system and their support systems and their kids and everything is impacted by some statements that are made. So I just, I think that we need to look beyond that and keep the politics out of those type of programs.
Thank you. With that, we will move on. I thank everybody for coming tonight and speaking. Oh, I'm sorry, I have a, I didn't see. Councilmember McIntyre.
Just, Mr. Mfranca came up and made a comment that I might have been hypocritical in my candidate forum. And in that forum, I said that I would be against any project that was completely surrounded by a single-family residential. And the fact of the matter is, that project on Sunset, the entire west side of that project is an apartment building and a medical building, and it's on a minor arterial, and I still think it's a beautiful project, or it was a beautiful project. And I really feel bad for that neighborhood because all of my developments, lastly, the one we just finished, it would have been a huge improvement to that community compared to what's there now. They would have had a pocket park with a bronze statue possibly in the back of it as they left every day, but so be it. I understand the neighborhood was a little upset with the project, but that's the way the cookie crumbles. And as far as developers and this constant hate towards developers, every single person in this room right now is sitting here and loves this city because of developers who built this city. Development, you shouldn't fear. Lack of development, or a desire to not want to develop in your community, is what you should fear. That's when things start to crumble. There's areas of this town that we drove around and saw blight in, and the future to remove that blight is development. One way or the other, somebody has to come in and redevelop, not the classic California term of government financed subsidized redevelopment, but take an old use and redevelop it. And we need to encourage that, and developers do that. Are there good developers and bad developers? Yeah, there's bad, that's life. But we shouldn't be afraid of development. That's what keeps cities getting better and not falling apart. And we're all here because of them. We love our houses because of them, our schools. Developers put kids in schools. Right now, I know a lot of school districts are suffering from a lack of enrollment. Well, it would be a developer to build or rebuild parts of our town to help with our schools. So I just want to point out that developers are a good thing. We shouldn't fear developers. We should encourage them because they're the ones who make our community better. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Sykes.
I really feel that I can't stand by and sit here and listen to the praise of developers without thinking of why I moved here, why my neighbors moved here, or why an abundance of people that I have talked to, who in particular, homeowners, feel that they are under attack. The value of their property, the quality of their lives, is being diminished by a lot of these things that we have recently voted on. These multifamily, high-density properties harm us. We don't think about the long term. We think about the short term in these decisions. The long term, you can go and look at some of these areas where we've had these high-density projects that have come, and now they're rental properties. And what happens is, you do a survey, and you see that there's a rental situation there to an entire large complex. Anyone who even wants to buy in there is going to find it difficult to get a loan, because the bankers know that owning something is different than renting. And so for our city homeowners, they need to be thinking of what direction our city is going in. We have a developer that brought some very expensive projects, the ideas, and that was put on a moratorium. That development would have brought a lot of money for the parks, such as where we put in the high density at San Bernardino and Orange. It would have brought a quality of people that we feel we need to surround our community with. It would have brought financing for public parks in the way of funding that would have paid easily for the soccer field. But we have a moratorium on the quality homes. And these projects that harm us, that inundate us like a storm, we get those approved with no problem. So I'm sorry, Mr. McIntyre. Yes, you're partially right, that the houses we live in were brought by developers. But today, the environment is harming us with that mentality of we're going to stuff your city with things you don't want. And you've had, you've had residents come in and beg, don't destroy where we've lived in 30, 40 years. We moved there. We expected it to be there when we die. And you put, just imagine, two houses, two families turn into a 20-unit condo in your community. Just imagine the cars. Just imagine the people. Just imagine the stress on the infrastructure. That is an unhealthy situation for people who are planning to retire in their homes. And they bought into it 40, 50 years, and then they come forward to this situation. It's shocking. And that's why when they walk in here, they can't believe that when they moved here, it was so pleasant. And they had a council that was 110% responsive to their needs. And then now they come in 30, 40, 50 strong saying, don't destroy our community, and they get ignored. We need to get back to what West Covina was all about 20, 30, 40, 50 years ago, when most of us moved here who were homeowners. We moved here because this was a healthy place to raise our children. This was a prosperous place to live and to maintain our homes, even though they got older. We would maintain them because we knew that there would be value there as we maintained them. But now that value is being undermined. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on the agenda. And I will say that I don't even know what to say, because I've always listened to the residents the best that I can, always taken case by case. And sometimes comments such as that, I, you know, I hope you're not talking about me. That's all I got to say. I think we do a good job up here and do the very best that we can, and it's just, no words. Sorry. Anyways, do we have a motion for the consent or anything to be pulled?
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Sykes.
Item three, please. I'd like to pull that for discussion.
Okay. All in, item three, do we have a motion in order for the consent?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item number three, which is the Centenarian program, recognition program. Did you want a staff report, or it's just a separate vote?
I would like to address what I feel is some discombobulation and some disregard on Mr. City Manager. Taking you back to Friday, the 13th day of September, when this subject of these formal, West Covina City Formal Recognition Program was on my mind, I picked the phone up, oh, I'm sorry, I contacted you, let's put it that way, try to keep it simple. And when I, when I contacted you, at that time, I did talk about a formal centenarian program. Isn't that true?
Yes, he did.
Thank you. Furthermore, when we addressed the issue and we began to speak back and forth, emails and phone calls, I indicated to you that if we did not have a formal centenarian program, if we did not have a city of West Covina formal centenarian program, I wanted it on the agenda. Is that true?
That is true. However, if you recall, sir...
Excuse me. So the bottom line is, that even though I asked for it to be agendized, it didn't happen. So...
Can you, I'm the mayor on the chair, and I'm going to say he was...
Can I please finish?
He was going to offer an explanation unless you...
That won't be necessary. What I want to ask her now is, can you please describe the city of West Covina Formal Centenarian Program, either you or staff, whichever way you would like to do it? I would like to have that explained to the public so that they would understand what it is clearly. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes. First of all, the centenarian program is essentially that they can, there is a website that the city developed in which they can fill out a form that provides the necessary information. And the city will prepare a letter and a proclamation addressed to the person that's requested on that form. That will be signed by the mayor. And in addition, they will be put on the list for the city's 90-plus birthday party in which they will be invited to, and also provide special recognition at that event as well. In addition, on the website, it also has links to the National Centenarian Program in which they can also enlist on that, and they can get the presidential, you know, letters and accommodations from that entity by itself.
Okay. So that's what this program is all about, then?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic. Any other comments or concerns?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Sykes.
At the end of this discussion, I would like to motion that we pass the formal centenarian, West Covina, City of West Covina program, so that every resident in the city that is desirous of participating in the program can have an opportunity to do so. Thank you.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Andy McIntyre. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you so much. Our next item on the agenda will be our item number five, which is under Mayor and Councilmember Reports, Councilmember Robert Sotelo, approval of two additional police officer positions within the general fund police department operating budget for fiscal year 2013, 2014. Do we, want to have a staff report? How do you, what is your pleasure, Mr. Sotelo?
Yes, allow me to present a brief staff report and also address a lot of the questions that were raised here tonight. First of all, you know, at the direction the council staff is bringing back the approval to hire two more police officers. This is being done based upon staff's diligent work in coming up with savings over the years as well as additional revenues. This, the city did refund a bond that's going to be closing in November, which will save approximately $184,000. In addition, the city took action through increased fee and charge raises, increases, which was also to generate approximately $300,000 in additional revenues in the future. Based upon that, staff feels that we have the additional revenues to increase the police department. At the same time, you know, there are specific goals that this council and I as the city manager would like to also uphold. With respect to the $13 million of cash reserve, that is a true statement. We do have approximately $13 million in cash reserves. And the reasons why we don't use that to hire more police officers is as the following. First of all, that $13 million is invested in our life in which we get a small amount of interest income. That interest income is used in turn for revenue, which helps us pay for, you know, ongoing operations. We need approximately $12 million just in cash on hand for cash flow management. And that's because we don't get all our revenues in the beginning of the year. We get it sporadically throughout the year. And so there's times in which we need cash flow to bridge the amount of money that's coming in in order to pay for ongoing operations and salaries. And that's, and a large part of that is police and fire. And so if we do not have cash flow on hand, we will have to borrow that money in order to provide that temporary bridge of cash in order to pay for salaries and operations. So it's very important that we have at least approximately $12 million in cash, and just to do that. The other thing is a mandate from this council, and one of my goals is for balanced budget. And in a balanced budget is where revenues exceed expenditures. If we spent to the $12 million, we would be deficit spending, and that would only be a one-time expense in which we don't have the ongoing cash, or we don't have ongoing revenue to pay for that ongoing expense. So that's not a prudent thing to do. The other thing that's out there looming is state takeaways. And as you know, that the state is looking to take approximately $12 million from the city, which is about our cash flow. And in the event they do that, then we do have an issue as far as cash flow. And so we would want to hold on to that money versus having to come up with other ways of coming up with that money later on. So this addition of the approval of the two additional police officers would still continue to be a balanced budget within this year. We do have reserve, not reserves, I'm sorry, revenues that would support this, and staff recommends that we go ahead and proceed with this.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for that. Any other comments or questions from council? Councilmember Sotelo?
I would like to thank staff for doing such a great job and finding the money and working with us. I hope we continue finding more money and looking more ways where we can continue to hire more police officers. I appreciate every much that you guys explained to everybody what is going on here. I think we have a great city. I think it's time that people really realize what the job that you guys are doing and what we are doing here. I'm going out right now. I'm going out right now. Excuse me, I have a horrible cold. I'm going out and talking to quite a few people, and that's why I've kinda run down right now. And it's sad to hear that some people, what they feel about our city right now, and they feel the job that's going on. But I appreciate the job staff's doing, and I appreciate the job that our police department and our fire department's doing. And I think if we're working together, we're gonna make it through this place, and we're gonna make it a better place. It is a great place to live, West Covina, like Councilmember Hurford was saying. We have so many great things here, and it's about time people started realizing that all the great things that we do have here in West Covina. But I'd just like to thank staff so much for this report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember, or Mayor Tim Hurford?
Yeah, I think this is a great thing, and I think there's gonna be more of it coming. Many of you realize we just have come out of a bankruptcy situation with a car dealership in the city, and we anticipate a pretty good lump sum of money through that process. So I think that's gonna add some additional public safety personnel, too. I wanna tell two incidents that I've been involved with in the last week that our police department has responded to and done a yeoman's job. This is election time, and there's a lot of signs in the yards. And a friend of mine had put signs up for some candidates. Middle of the night, she heard some rattling outside on a fence and looked out the front door, and somebody was trying to steal the signs. And she's ninety-two years old, and she went out her front door and told them to get away, which fortunately she had called the police first before she went outside. As she stepped on the porch, she slipped and fell into a rose bush. She's crippled and wasn't able to get up. Fortunately, the police department responded. The officer came to the house, shined the light in the bushes ironically, and heard her screams and said, "Ma'am, are you there?" And she said, "Yes, I'm a cripple. I can't get up." And the officer came into the gated yard and picked her up and carried her into the house. And I don't know who the officer was, but I wanna thank him for that. She could've died there. And kind of a sad incident. Another incident in my neighborhood over the weekend, knock on my door about eleven AM on Sunday morning, and the neighbor two houses down says, "My granddaughter's missing. Can you help us find her?" Right away, the entire neighborhood got out and started searching yards, searching hillsides, and going down streets all over the place. For about a half hour, we all went through the neighborhood. The police showed up quickly, went to the neighbor, and basically, you know, because of the seriousness of the crime, got in the person's face and said, "You know, you need to talk to me. Tell me what you've done, what you, how long this has been, blah, blah, blah." They entered the house. Within probably five minutes of them being there, they found the child underneath a bed sleeping. So it was a good, a great thing that the police officers, I thought that their passion and their style was perfect because here you had somebody that wasn't necessarily cooperating, but they got to the point and were able to find the child. So those are two great incidents. And I just can't say enough about our police department, and our fire guys do the same thing. So adding two more officers, and like I say, West Covina is a great city. We're the only city in Southern California with over eighty thousand in population with our own police and fire department. Residents don't understand how hard that is for a city who's lost thirty million dollars to the state of California over ten years, for a city that lost redevelopment, which was the bread and butter of our freeway corridor here in West Covina. And to, sure, we dropped a few officers, and now we're gonna add them back. We think we're at the point where things have turned around here in West Covina. So we're looking forward to a bright future. And all of the people that questioned some of the things of the leadership here, I hope that you realize that West Covina is a unique city. You can tell when you drive into Villinda. You can tell when you drive into Covina. Our streets are well-maintained. Our trash company picks up our trash every week. They're a great company. They do a great job for us. And I'm just, I'm proud to be on the council. And, you know, I have detractors, and twenty-three years, you're gonna have people that don't agree with you on every issue. But for the majority of us here in the City of West Covina, we're proud to call this our hometown, and it will stay that way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to entertain a motion, but I would also like to make sure to thank...
Madam Mayor?
Councilmember Sykes.
We're still in discussion mode, right? Regarding this item?
We are in discussion mode, sir.
Thank you. May I?
You can have the phone.
Thank you. You know, I would suggest that everybody on the sound of my voice, if you don't have a computer, visit the library tomorrow and take a look at this item that's agendizes, item number five. And review the word smithing. Because I beg to differ with the notion that we have money to hire two police officers. When you read this, you'll see that there's some lack of transparency here and just word smithing that really is not giving you just plain English. The fact is, our public safety is in a crisis. Having ninety police officers in a city of over one hundred and ten thousand people, pressed with the days that we live in of the governor being ordered to adjust the prison numbers. And what that meant was he needed to do something, and he needed to do something immediately. And what he did was, he sent them back to LA County and other counties where they came from. Then the sheriff goes, "Whoa, wait a minute. I got the same issue. I'm overcrowded." And along that way, there were some that just went out the side door that have committed some serious crimes. The bottom line is, folks, we are not prepared for what we're dealing with right now with our public safety. And if you just read under five, and you go to two, subsection two, and you read, "This appropriation is contingent upon the successful closing of the 2013 ASNADAM variable," and that sounds ugly to me, especially for people who've had their homes foreclosed on, "variable rate demand, lease revenue, refunding bonds, and the anticipated," that means we don't have it. "The anticipated annual savings of one hundred and forty thousand general fund expenditures." That's gobbledygook for, "We don't have the money." And there's something else that's not mentioned here with our public safety. At the end of September, we had this little grant that helped us bridge a gap with our fire department. That gap has, that gap has been widened now. Matter of fact, it's a deep crevasse because we don't have funding for nine firefighters. Perhaps the city manager can enlighten me where I'm wrong. Folks, we need to be real. And when I, speaking of election season, when I ran in 2011, one of the things I talked about is that we may have to tax ourselves. And what I was thinking about at that time was what we had been accustomed to. I remember when, in the nineteen nineties, we had a thirty, a hundred and thirty-strong police officers. And now we're down to ninety. And we didn't have the population that we have in nineteen ninety. So residents, read this item, wake up, and what I say to you is what I've been saying to a lot of neighbors, people that I've been in meetings with on, since when they got alarmed by a rash of untoward things that happened in their community, and they called me. Instead of coming up with some fancy word smithing, I just simply said, "Neighborhood watch. Neighborhood watch. If you have one, then you need to strengthen it, make it as robust as possible. Work with the police." Because they can't be everywhere, all day, all night. Where we all live, we can do something. A neighborhood watch is a very good start. If you don't have one, the police will gladly touch bases with you and help you get started because they know that helps them, because they're in danger, too. They're not super people. I know. I was the deputy sheriff for thirty-three years. And I went to some of those same calls like the mayor pro temp talked about, where the child was missing. And because we have good police officers that are trained, and they say, "Wait a minute. Child's missing? We've been looking around? Let's back up." That's been done thousands of times by police officers who work like these guys, trained. But they're not super. And we're in a critical low situation. So that child was found because of good police work and just thinking logically. Let's back, let's step back and see what's going on here. We need to search your home to ascertain perhaps the last time you saw the child. It's basic deduction. And it's the same thing here. Basic deduction. If you don't have police enough to really saturate, because that's what really kinda, kinda really holds crime off. Because the criminals, when you have enough police, like a hundred and thirty-strong, and people move to West Covina, oh my goodness, I see police everywhere. Crooks saw the same thing as the residents who were buying their homes here. Saturation in police work works wonders on criminals. They're not dumb. They know if they step into West Covina in the nineteen nineties, they were in trouble. And now, not so much, because they know, they don't see that sea of police officers that they had to go through to get to us. So how do we augment that? With low cost? Start to contact and connect with your neighbors. If you don't have a neighborhood watch, please, get one started. If you live on the border, let that borderline be your friend. Start a joint powers neighborhood watch. Thereby, you can get the sheriff, if you live down in the south end where the sheriff patrols, the La Puente area, talk to those neighbors that live across that borderline. I walk it every day. It's just one little hop. It's just a little line that shouldn't mean anything to neighbors, whether you live in West Covina or whether you live in a county. It's our community, and we need to take it back. We need to be there to help our police. So I'm gonna recommend, the reality is, neighborhood watch, because we don't have the money to do like we did in the nineties to bring that back up to a hundred and thirty police officers. So what's your best option? Start thinking, be your neighbor's friend. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to let the people know that we maybe have only supposedly ninety police officers, but let me assure you, you have the same number out in your streets to protect you. We have a fantastic department, and I support adding the two officers. Sometimes, I've been on the council almost fourteen years, and when I was first on the council, it looked like a lot of gobbledygook to me. But it's, city government works in a different fashion, and I'm gonna have the city manager maybe have somebody touch on this, so that the people can understand that, about the variable rate and the anticipated funds, cities work on budgets. That's how we do things. So maybe I can help educate the public as well as the greener council members on this council, because I don't like them freaking out our residents. That's unfortunate. And then I sit here and wonder, why do we have all these attacks during campaign season? Because it's just, I'm not even involved in the campaign. However, I just want to do our city's business, and it's hurtful to sit here and everything gets all mixed up. So what I'd like to do, it is somewhat of an agendized item, so we have to be very careful, again, on what is happening. But I just want the people to understand, we have officers in the streets. I mean, I'm looking up at our police standing there now, and I see a nod. We're not gonna put five officers out there when we've normally had ten. I mean, sometimes the cuts come from retirements or people that are in the offices, and people are definitely doing double duty, but we're not gonna make it on your safety. So with that, I'd like the city manager to briefly just respond to the item that we are discussing in reference to the operation budget and how that's going to play into hiring these two needed police officers.
Yes. First of all, the variable rate bond is being refunded where the variable rate is below two percent. And right now, I believe the fix is about five percent. So there is, so it's a matter of cash flow management. We are extending the term in order to have savings in which we can utilize more better. With respect to our police force, you know, the impact to the community of having ninety police officers is that, you know, I think the impact's more to the department, in which, you know, they need more police officers where they can operate better. You know, because of the fact is that they don't have the number of police officers, you have police officers working overtime. So you still have the police officers out there, but what we're doing to them is that we're making them more tired, you know, we're, you know, and this should help alleviate a little bit, and that's what our goal is. Our goal is to try to improve our department efficiencies, and this is one of those issues in which is important for us to consider. With respect to the word smithing, yes, I did carefully put in there the successful closing of the bond, because if that bond does not close, then it's not prudent for me to hire a police officer based on that. And I would come back to you with, you know, with probably saying, "Well, maybe we can just hire one." But I wanna be prudent in the fact is that I'm not hiring police officers without the revenue there. And I do believe the revenue is gonna be there, and I do believe that we have the ability to hire two police officers.
So we're moving in that direction, basically. And I know that, I think all of you sitting out there and everybody watching, you know, we all manage our own homes, and we only, always have so much money to work with and so much in our savings. And that's what it's like up here in a very, very large scale. And so we wanna make sure that we are managing your funds. And, you know, I can say that I love West Covina. I mean, this is the only city like Covina, they have a utility tax. We don't have that. And we have our own public safety. We have businesses coming to our city. People need to understand, too, about development. I mean, we do have, you know, our freeway corridor, which we have some development and businesses coming, and we should be happy for that because those businesses pay for our public safety services. That's our biggest generating tax dollar, so we wanna support that. However, every project that comes to us or any decision that comes to us, it is a case by case basis, and we wanna make sure to protect our open space. I think, you know, earlier comments, we wanna strike a balance, a balance between growth and a balance between protection of our neighborhoods. So, you know, that's where I come from. I would think that my council, I've always, you know, been here a long time, and they've always been very supportive of trying to do what's best and balance that. You know, it's hard. It's like your children asking, you know, "I want, or I need this for school, or I need that," or whatever, and you only have so much money in your savings, you're gonna just, or in your accounts. Or, police, we have to understand, police are continual, an expense. It's a continual expense. So something like taking savings is, those are one-time expenditures. So it would be not fiscally responsible to do that. And I, and I think that our finance director over there is understanding kinda where I'm going, and I just wanna share that with the people because, you know, I'm gonna say I think I speak for, and I can't speak for other people, but just history given, we do care about your tax dollars, but we also care deeply about your safety and wanna make sure that we do provide those services. So, Chris, did you have a real quick?
Yeah, I just forgot to mention that the variable rate does have a cap of four percent. So worst-case scenario, there would always be a savings and would not...
Okay. So basically, what we're saying is we're going, at this point, we're moving forward to two. I know, it seems very cumbersome. I mean, you have to go through a city with lots of steps, and we're not trying to not be transparent. I mean, that's why we have council meetings. That's why we have that phone number, nine three nine eight four oh one. If you guys need any information or need anything, I definitely think that any of If you guys need any information or need anything, I definitely think that any of us would talk to you at any time and get you the information that you do need. So with that, I see Councilmember Sykes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. City Manager. In this property that we're making arrangements on, it would have been paid off, before we did this arrangement, it would have been paid off when?
In 10 years.
And that was 2 million?
2.5 million outstanding right now.
So in 2 million, we could have paid that off in 10 years. And now?
The actual amount is not determined yet. It's not to exceed 3.2 million. It could be, it's, you know, it'll be less than that and it'll be in 20 years. Correct?
Thank you. Under the circumstances, from my perspective, logically, what we should do with this item is to table it. Just to set it aside until we actually have the funding to drop two police officers onto our streets or more. We need to get real. We're getting in debt to pay bills. And then now, we're gonna do this denial thing of, we're gonna put two police officers on the street, but we don't have the money. So again, I, from my perspective logically, this item should be tabled, should be set aside. When we have the money, let's bring it out and get it done when we have the money. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Sotelo.
I'd like to make a motion we approved for two additional police officers at this time.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. And before that, I would just like to thank Andy. I know at the last meeting that you saw that and Rob, you saw that. And I think it's a good direction for our city to go in. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries, four to zero. And at this time
Four to one.
I'm sorry, four to one. I'm already looking for adjournment. Come on. We have any AB 1234 conference reports, verbal if any, at this time? I see no raise a hand, so we'll go on to city council members, requests for reports, studies or investigations. I do not have any reports.
Madam Mayor, if I could, for the next agenda, have the Vine Street speed limit issue brought back for reconsideration.
Vine Street, okay. Staff has that. And if there's any city council comments, there is a, any adjournments?
I do have an adjournment.
Okay, so
Nobody else does.
Yep, nope.
Helena Redondo, good friend and I believe former commissioner here in the city of West Covina, yes. Passed away on September 24th after a battle with cancer. Very active in not only our city, but in other charitable organizations too. And she will be missed, so if I could make an adjournment in her memory.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, five to zero. Thank you.